I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the Wyoming Area School Board for June 24th, 2025. Everyone please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Alberdi, can you please take your call?
Kes Marske.
Here.
Supi.
Here.
Valenti.
Here.
Koppo.
Here.
Gaza.
Here.
Kopko.
Here.
Vitara.
Here.
Campani.
Here.
Alberdi. Here. We have a call, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you. Mr. Alberdi, can you read any additions to the communications report, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. We have one through 10 as per work session with the addition of number 11. Dr. John Pollard, Superintendent, requesting permission on behalf of the Wyoming Area Foundation for use of the secondary auditorium to hold movie days. Summary of applications received. The additions are Secondary Principal 3, Assistant Principal 1, Head Girls Basketball Home Coach 3. That concludes the communications report.
Thank you, Mr. Alberdi. I'd like to ask for approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting of May 22nd, 2025. All in my favor, say hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion passes? Dr. Pollard, can you please read your superintendent's report?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I would like to first congratulate our retirees. Roseanne Ankenbrand, Marilyn Bullis, Sheila Murtha, Betsy O'Malley, David Vazano, Marion Vazano, Kathy Rennelli, and Brenda Shiber. Really appreciate all the years of dedication and service that these individuals have given to Wyoming Area District, so.
I'd also like to take this opportunity to congratulate the class of 2025 and to thank the graduates and their families for all their outstanding contributions to our district over the last several years. Thank you, Mr. Bugle Hall, and the Buildings and Grounds crew, who worked very hard to make sure that the graduation ceremony was set up and outside again, so kudos to them. And finally, our summer camps and summer rec program that are funded through the Title IV Building Stronger, Safety and Stronger Communities Grant has started as of June 23rd. Those run daily, Monday through Thursday, until the mid, or until July 24th. And that ends my report, Mr. Vice President. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pollard. Attorney Farentino, can you please give your solicitor's report?
I can. Thank you. Just to note, we did meet in executive session last Tuesday on the 17th. We discussed ongoing personnel matters, received a security update, and some litigation. We did meet this evening in executive session. We discussed, again, personnel matters, an update on negotiations with our teachers, and special education litigation, as well as an evaluation component from our administration. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Attorney Farentino. Mr. Kopko, can you please read the treasurer's report?
Sir, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you.
People's Security Bank and Trust General Fund, $5,267,257.07. Payroll count, $6,994.38. Cafeteria count, $28,722.20. Student activities count, $144,263.32. Athletic fund, $2,538.31. Purchasing count, $500.32. Pennsylvania Local Government Investment Trust General Fund account, $157,776.38. The Series 2022 GOL account, $891,572.80. The money market account, $5,017,712.43. And that concludes the treasurer's report.
Thank you, Mr. Kopko. Mr. Mullin, can you now give your budget presentation?
Sure.
Thank you.
Board doesn't mind. I'm going to try to give it from here this evening. What we're designed to do this evening is to pass the final budget for the 25-26 school year. For people who have heard, who have visited regularly, this process started sometime in March with some internal discussion, actually earlier than that with the administration. We were required in May to pass a proposed final budget. The Board of Education did that, and we are here tonight now to pass our final spending plan for 25-26 school year. We'll go through, there's about 20 slides, then we'll be able to hopefully entertain any questions, try to clarify the assumptions that are made going forward, and hopefully by the end of the evening have a motion put forward to adopt a spending plan. So the first slide, if we could go to page 1, for people who have been on this page realize, we give a little bit of history on the next slide, Denise, if I can. There's a nine-year history of the district's revenue and expense together, along with the budget that we're just completing now for 24-25. This has a summary, we try to put in capsule form, that will show revenue less expense in the first yellow line, talks about each year whether expenses or revenue exceeded certain amounts. What's interesting, if you do a nine-year average for what's posted, over nine years, the district had an average of about a break even of about $131,000. So even though we've had years that have shown larger deficits and some that have shown some break evens or a little better, the average over that nine-year period is about $131,000. That's revenue over expense. The last yellow line below is a summary of what's referred to as the district's general fund fund balance. That is, if you took all of the assets in the general fund, paid your liabilities, what would we have left at the end of the day? And again, you can see that that nine-year history shows, again, some peaks and valleys for a low year of $2.2 million back in 1516 to a year in 2324 ending at what we're anticipating a balance of about $4.2 million. You take that 2324 year and you roll into 2425, which will end within a couple of days. What the district began, we believe, to start to experience is a little bit of slippage. The budget had shown for that year that we expect a deficit of about $1.2 million. Now, we're still calculating that amount. We'll talk a little bit more about that during the presentation. We, right now, originally think we're going to come very close to that number, which would result in an ending fund balance of about $3 million. The items that you're waiting for, there's a lot of items that come in post-June 30th, such as our relationship with the intermediate unit, whether, you know, they may have, or we may have engaged in services larger than what we advance. There's other outstanding tuitions for placements that the district puts, puts in place during the year. So that is really the question mark period on 2425, but we feel comfortable that there will be some type of negative number there. The next slide, pretty much just to get everybody up to speed, the proposed final, which was adopted in May, is what's on the screen. Back then, non-binding, but the assumptions up in that revenue section is the district did put in about, an increase of about 5.5% for property taxes. That increase brings into revenue about $1,067,000. We also did not incorporate in any revenue amount, any amount that we may be entitled to from the 25-26 state budget that the district will receive from the Commonwealth. The reason we didn't is what we have to go by so far is the governor's proposal, but we haven't had any clear amounts or any clear path as to what we can expect from the Commonwealth. So from a very conservative nature, we have the local tax on. Again, that was at May 31st. We'll talk about options coming forward. No state revenue. And then we have all of our expenses that are built into there, primarily dominated by salary and benefits that you can see that equate to $18 million and $13 million respectively. If you take those amounts, the revenue less the expense, at the proposed final budget level, we had a shortfall of $368,000 without state money and with the 5.5% increase. Now, that would be for the 25-26 year. As I stated and you saw previously, the block down below shows what our fund balance was at the end or what we were anticipating. It will be at the end of 2324, $4.2 million. If we spend out the million two, we then have a final 2425 fund balance of $3 million. Jump up to the, to the yellow portion there, and you can see you would fund that shortfall by taking it out of your fund balance, and we would see that we would have a fund balance of about $2.6 million at the end of 2526. Again, that was adopted, not binding, but was adopted for, at our May meeting and is referred to as the proposed final budget. The next slide is, what we did is we take that proposed final budget, and then we take the month of June, and we clarified that middle column, and there's explanations on page 5 and 6, but that middle column are some additions and/or deletions that we did as we continued to work on a final spending plan. When you go down and you look at, at that middle column, we had anticipated new revenues that we were able to determine of about $271,000. But unfortunately, if you come down to the expense line item, we also have projected some additional 25-26 expenses of about $521,000. So our actual number or our expense over revenue went up by about $250,000. Go to the far right-hand column. So now what we had, with a 5.5% tax increase, no state money in, revised expenditures, we now have a shortfall of about $619,000 for 2526, of which we would fund out of our fund balance. That would result in having about $2.4 million left. Page 5 and page 6, page 5 pretty much details the amounts that we have added back in the previous slide. So you can see there, we adjusted some amounts, just to take one example, letter A. We added some income where we reevaluated our delinquent real estate taxes and some excess revenue. So we added about $140,000 to revenue. Letter C, just talked on some of the significant ones, $145,000. It is a tenuous number because we're anticipating that to be our federal program revenue increase this year. However, as everyone's aware, we, you know, are eagerly anticipating not only what the state government will do, because some of our money flows through from the federal to the state to the district, but we're also waiting to see what happens at the federal level to see, as I think a lot of people are aware, on what type of federal support may come back from Washington. So it's a combination of items there. We did see some decrease in personal salaries and benefits. What happened between May was there was a, and I believe it's on a motion for this evening, we have factored in a collapsing of a class, a third grade class, guidance from the administration. So we reduced our expenditures by that amount. If you go through on the next page, and I'll try to go through these fairly. You see purchase professional and technical services. With federal funds, you're only obligated to do certain things. You can't make money on a federal grant. It needs to be spent. So we need to, with part of that federal money that's coming in, we were going to increase our purchase professional and technical service for some of our federal programs. Other purchase services, I'll comment a little bit on, well, actually, Jay, we were in receipt of, we outsourced our athletic training services. That came in between May and June at $25,000 higher than the prior contract that we negotiated. Other purchase services are up about $272,000 from the prior. And again, it's increases in transportation. Our insurance bid came in subsequent to that. And you can see the large number. We feel there's a need to increase our charter cyber school of expense by about $125,000. And the last comments are some supplies that we're seeing an increase. Actually, some are federal. We did put about $50,000 in. The district has already working through a new reading series, but there's a potential math series being put in play. So we needed to add some supply money for those purchases. And then you see the special ed cost of $75,000. That's, with our special education population going up, the amount for supplies needed to properly serve those individuals has also gone up. And then lastly, some operational supplies that we're looking at. And that's up, in prior years, we were able to fund some of the ESER money, which was pandemic-related funds, was utilized to pay for some cleaning supplies and items of that nature. I think we all realize that that number is now exhausted, so now it's a general fund pickup. So that just gives you a little bit of flavor of what happened between May and June. Page 7, we just do a, pretty much a little bit of comparison between the 25-26 spending plan and the 2425 plan. Comment on, just on the revenue items. A million two of the variance between two. Keep in mind, at least for right now for this discussion, it has about $1 million in there that is generated from the 5.5% tax increase. When you look at the state sources, that's the money that was awarded to us after last year's budget, when we adopted and the state came through and put some money forth towards the district. Last year, the governor's impact had about, an impact of about $1.2 million. Jump ahead, we'll see that this year, what the governor's proposal has for Wyoming area is rather than that increase, a proposed increase for basic ed, special ed, and adequacy funds of about $430,000, so a significant reduction. And the last revenue item, you see federal revenue going down. It's not so much what we're waiting to see from federal and state. That pretty much is an exhaustion of our ESER pandemic funds that we have utilized over the last three years. And we've utilized them for items such as air conditioning at JFK, a new telephone service throughout the district, chillers, two new rooftop units. Not a lot of items that are visual, but a lot of infrastructure was used by those federal funds. They're now exhausted, so we had to take them off of the schedule. On our expense side, you can see our salary and benefits are pretty much part of the increase. We do have collective bargaining agreements in place for both professional staff and support through, professional staff expires August 31st of this year. So we're trying to look at that salary and benefit line item. In the benefits, we did have an increase in our healthcare of about 10.4%, I believe was the final number. So you see a little increase there, along with some, some other items to come through. The other items worthy of discussion is, you can see the property and equipment go down by $1.8 million. That's a direct offset. As the revenue comes down on the federal side, we no longer will spend any on the equipment side. It's a natural offset to come through. So that just gives a little bit of color to the 25-26 year in comparison to the 2425 year. Page 8 is just, again, we're stating if you start at the bottom, that we think our fund balance at the end of '24, well, we know our fund balance is about $4.2 million. We feel we're going to spend that, so on the bottom, the fund balance will absorb our shortfall for '2425, and we'll have an ending fund balance of $3 million. So if you go up top and you took the 2526 revenue less expense, that's $619,000 that we talked about, you can see then that that $619 would be funded through our fund balance, and that would leave us at the end of 63026 with approximately $2.4. In the last two years, that could potentially be a drop from $4.2 million down to $2.4 with two years in succession of a little bit of expense running higher than revenue. Page 9, just to give a little bit of flavor, and I know there's, there's always some feedback as to, you know, what could be peculiar to Wyoming area school district. I showed this slide probably the last three or four years. And, and I just think this is, this along with another slide really get home at the two major challenges we have. What this puts forth is a history of the millage in Luzerne County and Wyoming County going back from 201516 all the way up to our current. And you can see in each year, the district experienced, and these are numbers that are provided by the county, and this is what we assess our property taxes on. You can see for those years through '2324, each year had a distinct reduction in assessed value. That means that taxable values of our properties went down. Certainly highlighted by the 1819 year, when we went down around $10 million. I believe if we go back, that was part of a weather-related issue along with, we don't have a lot of industrial parcels within the district, but I believe that may have been the year where we actually had the one that was granted a large reduction based on, based on an appeal. It's only in the last two years, in '2425 and '2526, that we start to see an increase go back up in assessed value. But if you go back to 1516 and come forward, we've had approximately a drop in assessed valuation of about $17 million, which is a very large number for a district to be able to handle. So then the next question is, what does that mean in revenue to the district? In the next slide, what we tried to do is put in play for you the impact of what that reduction does. And if you go back to those early years, it's not only you lose the revenue in that particular year, you also lose it in the ensuing years that follow. So we did a compounding exercise of what the end result was. You know, we also have the graph there, but the bottom line is we think that the cumulative impact of losing approximately $17 million of assessed value, shown on the prior slide, is about $3.5 million to the district over that period of time. Now, if there is a silver lining, it's the last two years, you can see, have become positive. But you need a lot of that type of activity to offset the prior reductions that we've experienced from the beginning. We certainly have seen some, you know, sheets coming to the area. There's some talk of other development. And a positive is that we've stemmed the tide of going negative, but there is still a lot of work to try to build that base back up. So that, I think, is primary challenge, number one, because we're always asked, and rightfully so, you know, the district over the last 14 years and perhaps longer have always put millage on. I mean, when does the break come? We're almost forced to do that because as your taxable's go down, we need to raise the rate to try to keep pace. We also had then, you know, some challenges on the federal and state funding, where that funding hasn't always been as strong as we had hoped for. So that's one of the primary drivers. And you can see, it's not like we put the millage on and the fund balance has skyrocketed. When we looked at that first slide, it showed anywhere between $2.2 and $4 million. That was pretty much an average. We haven't spiked it to $8 million or, or anything else. It's being utilized up in operations. The next slide that we'll talk about is, and just to give a perspective, we'll break from what taxing does. If the 5.5% in this year's environment with our assessed valuation brings in about $1,067,000, a partial index of 3.5 will bring in $678,000, and one half of the index would bring in about $533,000. Naturally, if we do zero increase, that would equate to $0 in new tax revenue. Here's what we have on the table, as far as we know now from anything from the state. On Governor Shapiro's budget address that was delivered in February, if you looked up the district, our increase over the prior year has basic ed at about $839,000, special ed at $758,000. The adequacy installment, which is part of the lawsuit the districts have put together on the funding formula, is about $270,000. We received the first installment in that last year. The second installment, which is not, we have not included any of these numbers in the numbers we're presenting, other than we showed the impact on some of the last slides. But we, we make the board cognizant of that this is potential revenue that may flow in, but we aren't able to certify or absolutely ensure that that revenue will come our way. Page 12, just have, almost halfway through, and I'll try to, try to get a little more concise. But the other challenge that we certainly had was the charter cyber issue. You hear an awful lot of that piece. And you can see this snapshot just shows our numbers from the '1617 year to our projection for '2425 has gone from $668,000 up to $2.7 million, almost $2.8 million. So that increase, you can see, you know, during pandemic years spiked up a little bit, but more importantly, continues to spike up in non-pandemic years, but it's a cost that we're looking at. You can see all the PDE literature that comes out. There's much debate on how to probably try to at least do something with the formula one way or the other to try to either, you know, even it out a little bit or come up with a different way of costing it out. But that, coupled with the increase due to property assessed values going down, I feel would be the top two challenges that Wyoming area really has to battle. The third one would be out-of-district placements for some special education services, but that is just a byproduct of, you know, what happens when we have some children that are challenged that can't be serviced in-house. We are forced to, to secure those services on another line item. We didn't do a chart on that, but that would be our third largest challenge that we, we battle. Page 13. So what we've included, now we're going to talk about what the options are for the final budget. What's included in here, we now are going to show options where we take out the 5.5% and offer certain other, other variables. We've also disclosed, but they're the same as that we're in the proposed budget. Our healthcare increase was 10.48%, public school retirement, we need to contribute 34%. And we have our normalized debt obligations we have to pay. And then we reiterate down, what's not included is any of the state money that the governor has put forth. Hopefully, you know, we not only receive that money, but perhaps a bump on that. Denise, I'm going to skip page 14 and go right to page 15. So here's where the debate starts. If we roll back and go back to 0% and take off the 5.5% with what we know now, if we look in that column, you can see that 46, first column, 46.147 of revenue, 47.8 of expense. There's a shortfall projected of about $1.6 million, $1,0686. Now granted, that number does not have in any state revenue. So if we were lucky enough to get $500,000 of state revenue, that deficit, one six, would go down by $500,000. But again, we put together this conservative approach for the board because not only do you not know what number you're going to get from the Commonwealth, now we're not even sure of the timing of when it will come in, if it does come in. So if you follow through on that logic, that opening fund balance that we thought would start the 2526 year of $3 million with, will now be decreased to 1.3 because you will need that in order to subsidize the $1.6 million shortfall. And you can see on the bottom, for each scenario, we've laid out what the appropriate tax increase would bring in in revenue. In the middle column, the 2.75, which is one half of the index, that would bring in about $533,000, and that would shrink that deficit, that expense over revenue to 1.1 million, right in the middle of the expenses over revenue. And again, if we were the recipient of a half a million dollars of state revenue, that would even go down further. We took the same logic for 3.5%, and you can see the impact on that. The difference on that is 678,000 of revenue versus at 2.5, it's 5.2, 2.75, it's 533,000. So, so there's three options that the board will discuss. And then if you go to the next page, we start at zero just as a reference point, but there's also, if we raised to 4.5, 5% and 5.5. 5.5 is the highest that the district can go by law. They adopted a resolution in February of last year saying that they would not go above the index. But that would be the max. So in, in that particular case, if they voted to include the index at 5.5, you would have expense over revenue of $619,000. If the Commonwealth came. If the Commonwealth kicked in the five hundred that's in the governor's budget, we'd almost be at a break even at that point. And then you would almost then be able to maintain your three million dollar fund balance. So what we like to do is we, we think it's important that we provide the board with the options, the impact not only on revenue and expense, but the impact also on their fund balance as we go through. Page seventeen. Pretty much, you know, you don't hide from it or whatever. This is probably a fourteen-year history that gives the amount of increase on both Luzern County side and on Wyoming County side. There were actually three instances in shaded area where the district needed to apply for an exception to go higher than the index. In each of the other cases, we were able to live within the, within the index. And again, without running up that fund balance to a huge number to go through. What we tried to do on page eighteen is try to make available for homes in Luzern County, what impact any of those options have on homes that are assessed at that particular value. If you just take a two hundred thousand dollar home assessed value, if you turn around and if we do a two point seven five percent increase, that would be an increase of one hundred and fifteen dollars to that particular homeowner. If we went to five point five percent, staying at that home assessed at two hundred would be an increase of two hundred and thirty-one dollars. And we do the same if you go to page nineteen, where we try to do the same logic for Wyoming County at that point, where we do the same piece. The only thing that I do, I have to say regarding these two slides, we are in receipt of gaming funds from the Commonwealth. Everyone probably refers to and remembers that. You take those gaming funds and if individuals within your district apply for a homestead, farmstead exemption, you're able to, or required to reduce your property taxes. You see on your tax bill, you've seen them over the years, by the amount of applicants divided by your amount of gaming funds. The gaming funds divided by the number of applicants. This year, for disclosure purposes, we have, this year's deduction will be about one hundred and seventy-three dollars rounded. Last year, it was about one hundred and forty-seven dollars. The two variables are how much gaming we receive. This year, we received more, the highest level ever. And the second one is depending on what households apply for that. So the backend is, we just, the last two slides are on twenty and twenty-one. And we will entertain some questions if there are any. Page twenty is, we simply put, we took that five point five percent increase and said, let's put in the governor's number of four hundred and thirty thousand. What would the spending plan look like? And on the far right, we would have expenses over revenue at about one hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. And we would not need to use bulk of that fund balance to be able to fund that. So it gives you a flavor of what five five does versus if we go to slide twenty-one. And I just took two parameters. This one has two point seven five, which is one half of the index. Page twenty-one D. If you look through and stay on that far column, because we're cutting the revenue from a million sixty-seven by fifty percent going to half of the index and roughly putting in about, putting in five thirty-three in revenue, we still have a, a deficit of seven hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. And we would fund that through our fund balance of about two point three million dollars. So with that, that concludes, I think, what, what'll happen. Certainly available to answer any questions or try to answer any questions. But I think our next step is we'll look for the board to adopt any one of those options to try to put forth with the twenty-five, twenty-six spend. Turn to your chair, available, are any questions from the board?
Thank you, Mr. Malone. Do you want to take questions on just the presentation now, or do you want us to go through the financial report?
I think maybe now would be fine.
Okay. If there's any questions from the board on the budget presentation, you can take those down.
One thing I want to say is that cyber school is killing us. And House Bill one five zero zero passed the Senate, or the House, I'm sorry. It's got to pass in the Senate, it's going to the House. And if you want to write your legislators, please do so because you see how much we're putting, almost three million. And I mean, that would generally definitely help with, with taxes at all. It's not even, I don't even know if we'd have to raise them if we got that much money back. What do we tell them?
Yeah, it certainly would, you know, help in the right direction or be able to limit that amount. Any of that savings, I mean, some of them are rumored to be, you know, that bill can change our costs by a million dollars. That could go from two point seven down to one point seven would have a significant impact on that.
Okay, yeah, the only other thing I want to say is that the Commonwealth Cyber Academy is a corporate sponsor of the Whoopsquare Scranton Penguins with naming rights to Ice Level Lounge and banners hanging throughout their, the ice rink.
Free bear or no?
So I mean. This is, we have to count you for every dollar that we spend. And we spent a lot of time going over budgets, going through all these budgets, trying to look at expenses, trying to cut classes where we can. And they have no accountability. They, they spend it on, on that, they spend it on gift vouchers that they give their kids. They spend it on Google ads. They spend over thousands of dollars, millions of dollars, hundreds of thousands spent on Google ads alone. Over five hundred pages of, of TV ads and invoice, you see them on TV. You don't see us advertising on TV. There's millions of dollars, but they have millions in their fund accounts where we don't even have, you know, what we have, two, three, four. They have over millions and no accountability. They don't have an elected school board, their school board isn't elected. They give gas to vouchers to teachers to get the school. They give game tickets to the kids to go to, to various games. There, there's, you could go to the state auditor, the Pennsylvania State Auditor, and look at the report that they have on, on the cyber schools, which they had to get a right to know to get the information that was filed, to get all this information. But a lot of expenses that they put out that we can't do. And it's a waste of your and our tax dollars. It's not going towards education. They fund nonprofits, they take the money to nonprofits, hundreds of thousands of dollars to nonprofits. So if, if you want to go, go on the site, you could just Google it, State Auditor Report on Cyber Schools, and you'll see all the information that's there. And like I said, the bill is out there and then hopefully the bill will pass, which I doubt it will though, from what I'm seeing. But any, any letter or anything that you could do to voice your opinion against and, and have cyber school reform, you know, done, House Bill one five zero zero is the one that you wanted with us. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thanks, Mr. Popper. Just, just to jump on what Mr. Popper said, the Auditor General did do a full audit. And the website is PAAuditor.gov. Just go on that site and you can see the audit. And you see how we're wasting our taxpayers' money. Your head's going to spin, you see some of the stuff they're spending money on.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board on Mr. Malone's budget presentation? Are there any questions from the audience on Mr. Malone's budget presentation? Can you just, if you can't get up, sign in, but just let us know your name. And just a reminder, everyone will have three minutes.
First, Wyoming. Did the board charge the administration with any kind of percentage to save in certain accounts to try to get the tax increase down? In other words, you know, let's cut ten percent from this, fifteen percent from that. Was it, was there any kind of discussions like that that took place? Or are we just working off Mr. Malone's numbers? And just raise taxes another five and a half percent?
We've made cuts.
Cuts? All right, you, you charged the administration with ten percent cuts. And you say, come back to us with ten percent cuts. See what you can come up with. I just want to know if there was any kind of discussion like that that took place? Or are we just going to vote on a tax increase?
Mr. Urani, so we, I go back and I look, we have not raised the budget for the extracurriculars in the last ten years. So, and that was cut at that point. So there really is not much more cutting to do. So if we're talking about getting rid of junior high sports, we're talking about eliminating extracurriculars, you know, cutting coaches from, from those staffs. Those are things that the board can certainly make a, a motion and, and do. But then who are we hurting? We're hurting the kids because then they don't have.
If you tax everybody out of their house, you're going to hurt the entire community.
Exactly.
Well. I mean, guys, my daughter's in college. She eats ramen noodles because I'm trying to, trying to help her as much as I can with the tuition.
And you're absolutely right, Mr. Urani.
You just can't keep raising taxes.
As I said, though.
Can we get an honor bid?
And Carl, I'm not trying to get in an argument with you, but I'm going to let you know, when you sat on this board and you saw the process that, that we went through, okay? The way that the state has set up the funding stream right now, it requires this elected board who all reside here, all right? I reside here, many of the administration, the support staff, the teachers, they're all residents of this district, okay? The way it's set up, which they went to court several years ago, right? And it was found to be unconstitutional. The courts went back to the legislator and said, fix this. And they did it partially. They didn't do it the whole way. Then they came up with this, you know, arbitrary numbers with this adequacy fund that leave many districts out. You know, we look at, when we look at how the adequacy funds were distributed, Toncanic gets zero, Lake Lehman gets zero, Northwest gets zero. And then across the river, they're getting a million dollars. Down the street, they're getting a million dollars. And we get two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So the, the way that the system is set up at the state level, I, I hate to say this, Carl, your gripe's not with these nine folks. Your gripe is with the people in Harrisburg. And I, I feel that our local representatives are, are doing a pretty adequate job of advocating for those changes, but then you're left with the rest of the state, all right? So it, it's an unfortunate system, Carl. I agree with you, it's set up wrong.
John, in the present, if you only have twenty bucks in some tonkosh twenty-five, you know, the thing that you want tonkosh twenty-five, you don't buy it. All right, you guys have a hundred and eighty-some thousand dollars in here for, for athletic training services.
We're required to have that.
For a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars?
That's for four, that's for three years.
It's still a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars?
And we put it out the bid, Carl, we put it out the bid.
That's fine, okay?
And they were the lowest one.
But.
And again, and they were the only one. And again, am I supposed to not have a doctor on the sideline at a game? Am I?
Well, in response to that too, there was a full-time staff member with benefits that used to do that job that cost a lot more money than that too, Carl. That was an area that we changed in, in the wake of a retirement. So that particular item, although it's still costly and required, there has been a savings realized in that regard. So that was one thing, and the process was then put out the bid. So that was a problem you inherited when you were on the board as well. But it was a change that happens as a result of a retirement. So on the athletic piece, although it's expensive, it was put out the bid. If there is a savings realized.
Here, here's what my, here's what my personal frustration is.
Your three minutes are up, if you could.
A lot of people. Excuse me?
Your three minutes are up, so if you could briefly finish.
Three minutes, that's what we get, huh? My, my frustration is, is that you, you keep conducting business the same way. Okay, you're not doing, in, in private industry, if something needs to get cut, it gets cut. You just don't keep spending money, okay? And part of, part of what I wanted to do when we were on the board is I wanted to get, do things like get Malcolm Baldrick Quality Certified. I bought the books for the district, they were seven hundred dollars with my own money. I don't think anybody read them. Could I have them back? Because maybe I'll give them to Lake Lehman.
I'll look at them, I'll look for them.
Yeah, okay. I, I, it's, John, it's too late. It's too late to look at them. This was ten years ago.
But Carl, things have changed and we're still stuck with the system that the, that Harrisburg is setting up for us. Harrisburg, that's where the problems.
Are there any other questions from the audience about Mr. Malone's budget presentation before we get into the financial report? Can you please come to the podium and sign in?
It's just a quick question.
Also, I didn't say it, but any virtual questions can be emailed to dholmes@Wyomingarea.org.
On the cyber, if you can go back to the cyber, what slide was that?
Seventeen maybe?
Seventeen.
Twelve, I'm sorry, page twelve. Page twelve.
It says projected for twenty-four, twenty-five. What is the projected for twenty-five, twenty-six?
What we put in was about two point five million dollars because what they did is part of what the Commonwealth did for the last part of this fiscal year. They changed the funding formula to be able to charge a lesser rate for special education for charter cyber. So what we're doing is we're making the assumption, it's a brave assumption, that they're going to keep that in place. So we saved about one sixty-six from January through June. We've annualized that. So we put in about two point five, two point six million dollars.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions about the budget presentation? Can you come sign in? If you could, thank you. And say your name, please, sorry.
Steve Hooper. The first thing I'd like to say is to Mr. Malone, it's actually been two thousand and nine since the last, was the last year that the district did not have a price incre, a tax increase.
I said we only went back to twenty fourteen.
Yeah, so it's been two thousand and nine. And also to Mr. Pollard, I disagree with you totally when you say that it's not, it's Harrisburg, it's their fault as far as the tax increases, it's not the board's. This board and past boards have voted, they're the ones who are responsible for the tax increase year after year, like I said, since two thousand and nine. The one thing that I did not hear, and I, I very rarely hear, if there's obviously a revenue issue, but if we have no choice, if we have no ability to affect the revenue besides tax increases, we then have to look at expenses. I've never heard, I see other districts when they have rough financial times, I see other districts talk about layoffs. Never hear anything about layoffs. Why is that? Why, why year after year, we have tax increases, but apparently we don't talk about layoffs? We don't talk about cutting expenses, just like this gentleman said. Just like any, any government or, or most businesses, some years you have to go, you have to say, we're, we're getting a ten percent across-the-board reduction in expenses. I never hear anything like that. Am I wrong to say that? I mean, have we talked about this year? Has anyone brought up in your meetings, any discussion of layoffs?
Who would you suggest who laid off? A teacher? A parent?
You have the information there. Possibly, possibly, yes.
I will say with class, at least five teaching positions in the past twelve months. And we're also looking at the administrative, administrative structure of the district at this time in order to say.
Okay.
To answer questions.
Mr. Hooper also, and I don't have the specifics in front of me, it's not much, but there have been occasions where if someone retired and that individual wouldn't be necessarily have to be replaced, they weren't replaced either. So in lieu of layoffs, there have been occasions where people weren't replaced and that salary piece would fall off. So there has been some of that. And then there were classroom collapses. The other thing, we're obligated to have certain people to teach ratios and certain things.
Is that a state law?
Yeah, I mean, there's state, state law. And the other thing we have is the parameters that have to be met. So I think we're professional employee light, we're not heavy based on the fact that we've had attrition here. And again, I don't have it written in front of me, but there have been occasions where there were collapses and people weren't replaced.
Well, I, I mean, now's not the time, I'll get into it at another time. But I received numbers from, from someone who's very familiar with, with the school district last year. And he said, if you go back fifteen years, twenty years, I think even ten years, the number of students have dropped and the total number of employees has risen. That's not a way to, to, to run the district. But the last thing I just want to say, since my time is up, I would hope, obviously, I'm, I'm thinking that the board is going to vote for a tax increase, unfortunately. But hopefully, with the teachers' negotiations, with their contract coming up, I would hope that someone right now has the guts to say enough is enough with expenses and increases. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Urani.
Vanessa Smith, Exeter. Can we see slide number seventeen, please? Mr. Malone, can you tell me on slide seventeen what the total tax increase is from two thousand and eleven? Mr. Malone, can you tell me on slide seventeen what the total tax increase is from two thousand eleven to two thousand twenty-five? If you go down and you add up this percentage increase?
No, we just have, we simply have them, I have them by year there, so.
It's forty-eight percent. I added it like, I didn't do the point five to point seven, but just adding the whole numbers, it's more than forty-eight percent. Almost fifty percent tax increase in, well, I've only lived in the district thirteen years, so thirteen years.
I understand, and, and we have the appropriate percentages by each year there.
I'm just saying, but to keep having them and having them and having them, it's just problematic, and I think that's why we have such a turnout tonight.
Thank you. Are there any other questions about Mr. Malone's budget presentation before we proceed to the finance report? Alright, I will now read the additions to the finance report, one through ten, um, as read at the work session. Number eleven, approve the final general fund budget for twenty-five, twenty-six school year and authorize the secretary of board to advertise in the, the budget notice of the adoption of the final general fund budget according to law. The final general fund budget provides for the expenditures of forty-seven million eight hundred thirty-four thousand nine dollars and equity and revenue of like amount and reflects a tax of twenty-one point seven eight nine zero mils for the boroughs of Exeter, Exeter Township, Loser County, West Pittston, Wyoming, West Wyoming and Wyoming per one thousand dollars of assessed valuation on real estate and a tax of one hundred eight point six nine zero nine mils for Exeter Township, Wyoming County per one thousand dollars of assessed valuation on real estate. Budget also maintains the following per capita tax of five dollars on all persons over twenty-one years of age or residents or inhabitants of the school district under the authority of the Act of March tenth nineteen forty-nine, PL thirty, Article six, Section six seventy-nine and its amendments and additional per capita tax of five dollars per person on all persons over twenty-one years of age who are residents or inhabitants of Exeter, Exeter Township, Loser County, Exeter Township, Wyoming County, West Pittston, West Wyoming, Wyoming under the authority of Act five one one and its amendments, foregoing being applicable to taxpayers less than sixty-five years of age and a local services tax for individuals formerly the occupational privilege tax within the Wyoming Area School Boundaries, real estate transfer tax one percent and wager income tax of one percent. Number twelve, uh, approve to adopt the attached resolution establishing property tax calendar and installment dates, whereas Act one of the special session of two thousand six requires school districts no later than June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four to adopt the resolution calendar year twenty twenty-four and each year thereafter authorizing the collection and payment of school real property taxes in installments excluding any interim or delinquent school real property taxes. Now therefore be it resolved that taxpayers approved pursuant to Section three forty-one of Act one of the special session of two thousand six shall be eligible for participation in installment payment of school property taxes. The following are excluded from real estate installment payments, interim school property taxes, delinquent school property taxpayers and all of the taxpayers except eligible homestead, farmstead, property owners and small business owner property as mandated by fifty-three PS, Section sixty-nine, twenty-six point one five zero two, and that qualifies as small business owner property. And be it further resolved that the tax duplicate shall provide for payment of school real property taxes in a single payment or installment at the option of eligible taxpayers as follows. A, full payment. Full payment of the real estate tax shall be due and payable by the close of business on November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five with a two percent discount provided for full payment prior to September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. All taxpayers except as indicated below who fail to make payment of the tax in full by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five by the close of business shall be charged with a penalty of ten percent, which penalty shall be added to the tax by the tax collector and collected by the tax collector. The school real property taxes shall become due and payable and be collected as provided in the Act of May twenty-fifth nineteen forty-five, PL ten fifty, number three ninety-four, known as the local tax collection law, subject to the discounts and penalties provided by the Act unless B, installment payments, installment payments of taxes shall be due in three equal payments on the following due dates, September third, twenty twenty-five, October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five and November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Payment of the first installment by a taxpayer eligible for installment payments shall conclusively evidence and intention to pay school real property taxes in installments. Those eligible taxpayers electing to pay in installment payments must pay the face amount of the school real property tax bill. No discount shall be offered for installment payments if the installment payment is made after installment date and a ten percent penalty shall be assessed on the amount of the installment payment due. Two or more late payments of ten days or more will render the taxpayer ineligible to participate in installment payments for the following school fiscal year. Now therefore be it further resolved that in the event that a taxpayer fails to evidence and intention to pay school real property taxes in installments, those taxes shall become due and payable and be collected as provided by the local tax collection law, PL ten fifty, number three ninety-four and subject to the discounts and penalties provided in the Act of Taxpayer Relief Act of two thousand six. Tax bills not paid in full by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five will be turned over to the Loser County Tax Plan Bureau for residents of Loser County and Wyoming County Tax Plan Bureau or residents of Wyoming County honored before the date established by the county which the school district is located for the turnover of delinquent taxes pursuant to the Act of July seventh nineteen forty-seven, PL thirteen sixty-eight, number five forty-two, known as a real estate tax law. Now therefore be it further resolved that the board hereby directs the collection of installment payment of real estate taxes to be made to Wyoming Area tax collectors in accordance with rules and regulations that the board may now or hereafter implement, which shall set forth on all notices regarding the payment of real, of school real property taxes in installments and the dates on which such payments are due be set by property owners forth on the tax notice sent to approved homestead and farmstead. Number thirteen, approve the attached resolution designed to implement homestead, farmstead exclusions as mandated by Act one. Recommended that a resolution be adopted by the Board of School Directors of Wyoming Area School District that homestead and farmstead exclusion real estate tax assessment reductions are authorized for the school year beginning July first, twenty twenty-five under the provisions of the Homestead Property Exclusion Program Act, part of Act fifty of nineteen ninety-eight and the Taxpayer Relief Act, Act one of two thousand six, as follows. Number one, aggregate amount available for homestead and farmstead real estate tax reduction. The following amounts are available for homestead and farmstead real estate tax reduction for the school year beginning July first, twenty twenty-five. A, gambling tax funds. Pennsylvania Department of Education has notified the school district that PDE will pay to the school district during the school year pursuant to Act one fifty-three PS, Section sixty-nine, twenty-six point five zero five. B, as a property tax reduction allocation funded by gambling tax funds, the amount of eight hundred thousand four hundred five, eight hundred nine thousand four hundred five dollars and fifty-four cents. B, Philadelphia tax credit reimbursement funds. PDE has notified the school district that PDE will pay to the school district during the school year pursuant to Act one fifty-three PS, Section six nine two six point three two four. Three, as reimbursement for Philadelphia tax credits claimed against the school district earned in from tax by school district resident taxpayers, the amount of eleven thousand ninety dollars and eighty-one cents. C, aggregate amount available, adding these amounts to aggregate amount available during the school year for real estate tax reduction is eight hundred twenty thousand four hundred ninety-six dollars and thirty-five cents. Two, homestead, farmstead numbers pursuant to Act fifty, fifty-four, PACS, Section eighty-five, eighty-four I and Act one, fifty-three PS, Section sixty-nine, twenty-six point three four one G three. County has provided the school district with certified report lists and approved homesteads and approved farmsteads as follows. A, homestead property number, the number of approved homesteads within the school district is forty-seven, thirty-seven. B, farmstead property number, the number of approved farmsteads within the school district is six. C, homestead, farmstead combined number, adding these numbers to aggregate number of approved homesteads and farmsteads is forty-seven, forty-three. Three, real estate tax reduction calculation. The school board has decided the homestead exclusion amount and the farmstead exclusion amount shall be equal, divided into paragraph one C, aggregate amount available during the school year for real estate tax reduction of eight twenty thousand four ninety-six point three five by the paragraph two C, aggregate number of approved homesteads and approved farmsteads of forty-seven, forty-three. The maximum real estate tax reduction amount applicable to each approved homestead and to each approved farmstead is one hundred seventy-two dollars and ninety-nine cents. Number four, homestead, farmstead exclusion calculation, dividing paragraph three, maximum real estate tax reduction amount of one seventy-two ninety-nine by the school district real estate tax rate of twenty-one point seven eight nine zero mils, point zero two one seven eight nine zero for Loser County. The maximum real estate assessed value reduction to reflect it on tax notices as a homestead and farmstead exclusion for each approved homestead and farmstead for Loser County is seventy-nine, thirty-nine. Number five, homestead, farmstead exclusion calculation, dividing, though paragraph three, maximum real estate tax reduction amount of one hundred seventy-two dollars and ninety-nine cents by the school district real estate tax rate of one oh eight point six nine zero nine mils, point one zero eight six nine zero nine for Wyoming County. Maximum real estate tax, real estate assessed value reduction to reflect it on tax notices as a homestead and farmstead exclusion for each approved homestead and farmstead for Wyoming County is fifteen ninety-two. Number six, homestead, farmstead exclusion authorization, July first tax bills. The tax notice issued to the owner of each approved homestead and farmstead within the school district shall reflect the homestead and farmstead exclusion real estate assessed value reduction equal to the lesser of A, the county established assessed value of the homestead, farmstead, or B, the paragraph four, maximum real estate assessed value reduction of seventy-nine, thirty-nine for Loser County. For purposes of this resolution, approved homestead and approved farmstead shall mean homesteads and farmsteads listed in the report referred to in paragraph two above and received by the school district from the county assessment office on or before May first pursuant to Act one fifty-three PS, Section six nine two six point three four one G three, based on homestead, farmstead applications filed with the county assessment office on or before March first. This paragraph six will apply to tax notices issued based on the initial tax duplicate used in issuing initial real estate tax notices for the school year, which will be issued on or promptly after July first and will not apply to interim real estate tax bills. Number seven, homestead, farmstead exclusion authorization, July first tax bills. The tax notice issued to the owner of each approved homestead and farmstead within the school district shall reflect the homestead and farmstead exclusion real estate assessed value reduction equal to the lesser of A, the county established assessed value of the homestead, farmstead, or B, the paragraph five, maximum real estate assessed value reduction of fifteen ninety-two for Wyoming County. For purposes of this resolution, approved homestead and approved farmstead shall mean homesteads and farmsteads listed in the report referred to in paragraph two above and received by the school district from the county assessment office honored before May first pursuant to Act one fifty-three PS, Section six nine two six point three four one G three, based on homestead, farmstead applications filed with the county assessment office on or before March first. This paragraph seven will apply to tax notices issued based on the initial tax duplicate used in issuing initial real estate tax notices for the school year, which will be issued on or promptly after July first and will not apply to interim real estate tax bills. Number fourteen, approve the intergovernmental agreement between Wyoming Area School District and LIU eighteen. The LIU will provide in-service school psychologist service to students within Wyoming Area School District at a cost of sixty thousand dollars for the one hundred eight days of service effective at the beginning of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Number fifteen, approve the settlement agreement and release for student number three zero zero two one four zero pending final approval by the school solicitor. Number sixteen, approve the general ledger sheet, total one million four hundred forty-seven thousand eight hundred fifty-six dollars and fifty cents. And that concludes the finance report. I make the motion to accept.
Second.
Uh, are there any questions from the board on the finance report?
Uh, for clarity, should we just let the public know what percentage we agree on or what has been learned of it?
It's three point five percent. I'm gonna make the motion that I said I was gonna make last week. Just to be clear, as everything gets misconstrued, I'm not making a motion to mergers with any other school district. I'm not gonna sit here and argue why or why not we should do that because that's not the motion I'm making. Um, I'm also not trying to scare anybody that the school district's gonna go bankrupt in any short-term period of time because it's not. Um, as I said last week, I'm just making a motion to form a committee to gather information as to what merger could look like. And the reason I'm doing that is because I'm concerned about the school district's finances long-term, not in the short-term. We were in the same position last year, we're in the position this year, and as far as I can see, we're gonna be in that position going forward. So, I'd make a motion to amend the finance report to include number seventeen, uh, form a committee to gather information and explore the possibility of a merger within an adjacent school district.
Mr. Hoover's president.
Is there a second? I mean, if there's no second, then.
We had a, we had an other motion going, I think.
Yeah, but the motion to amend takes precedent over the main motion. This is something we had a couple of months ago, I believe, as well.
You wouldn't, you didn't really think I'd make a motion. We could just form a committee and without a motion, we'll, I'll second that motion. I think it, it serves something to look into what was going to be possible to.
Mr. Aubrey, if I have a, will call on the motion to amend. I, I'm sorry, I'll open up for discussion or questions from the board regarding the motion to amend first. Uh, less than a forum of the school board, so I would imagine for all the administrators.
Would it be even with other districts or how, how do you foresee this working?
I would foresee conversations with other school districts and elected officials, yes.
And would that have to go through Dr. Pollard or the board or how? I'm just confused at how that would work.
I believe that would go through the committee, so again, um, you can't have a forum of the school board members on the committee, but we can have up to four. Uh, we can have administrators on the committee, and I think the committee would make those determinations as to who to reach out to and gather information from. And obviously, anyone in the public or elected officials wanted to reach out to the committee, that can happen as well. That's how I would foresee it.
I don't think I'm in favor of committing that only because it excludes, you know, the entire board body. I'd rather do it as something in an executive session or we decided to do a special night for it or something.
Is that something we could discuss at executive session? That doesn't have to be public if we have a forum?
We'd have to ask our solicitor, I'm sure.
Uh, that would be my concern. I wouldn't want to violate the subject.
Depends what component you're talking about, the labor end of it, the security end of it, mergers. I mean, that's a large discuss, larger discussion. I mean, the, the context of a committee can, a committee can be formed to have that discussion.
Yeah.
And I think what, I think what, uh, Mr. Soupy's question was, I think, would there be an opportunity for a public discussion or something at some point from the board acting as a whole body? Yeah, I mean, that's something that would be addressed as well.
Yeah, like to the extent that that was a question to answer, my thought process of doing a committee was to not have a forum, so we're not violating any something.
Yeah, I don't know. It's strange to put forming a committee on the agenda to be so. I was just curious how it would work. I'm with Mr. Cashmarzky. I have a lot of questions about it before I vote on something like that.
Mr. Ferantino, just a, a question. Um, we do form committees all the time. Um, what would be the difference that, uh, once we take care of the budget tonight, that we sit down down the road and form a committee, uh, in executive session like we normally form committees?
Committee would be formed, a committee like this would be formed by motion at the board. This isn't, this is an ad hoc committee. It's not a negotiation committee or one that just typically exists. So, we form our committees when we reorganize, and then the only other kind of committees that typically would be a negotiation committee.
Right.
Um, which are authorized for us to have. That would be required. So, if this is something that's different, that would require an act of the board to form a committee.
Okay, I mean, I'm not opposed to it down the road, but I, I just, I need more information on who's gonna be on it and, and stuff like that.
Are there any questions? Any other questions from the board on the motion to amend? Are there any questions from the audience on the motion to amend?
Why are we not looking at all aspects of merging?
What do you mean by that?
I worked in the schools down in Florida and it was county-run. Merging, they merged all their schools together into the county where the county ran them. I've had this conversation with you before.
Yeah, that's not happening here. It's just not happening.
A, a lot of the school districts are struggling. Why are we?
If the county's not gonna take over and run our school district, we're set up by the Commonwealth. It's a whole different setup than Florida, so it's not something we as this body can do.
But that's where it started there. So, if the districts are struggling, the districts can get together and all of them start to merge. Why are we looking at singling into one?
I think, to answer your question, I think you make a good point. Just from my brief overview of looking at the state law, a merger can happen between two districts if two school boards vote on it. I don't really know if there's a provision in the state law on how a county school board would be formed. But I, I don't totally disagree with you, what you're saying. I know a lot of different states do that.
And all of it goes back to the state, all of it goes back to the department for, for approval and everything. It's just not something that's done.
Right, no, and I understand that. I, I mean, I've taken school law too. Like, I have a large background in this, you know?
If you did, then you'd know that what you're asking in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania is not likely to happen. That's what I'm saying. It's just something that is a bureaucracy that has existed since the beginning of education in this state.
But things are changing.
Okay. Fa- fair enough, but again, we have five hundred districts. They're not going to be taken over as county-run or county.
But if we're looking at our district merging with another, other districts are starting to hurt. Other districts are starting to say things. We aren't the only district that is hurting. So, why are we just, first of all, what other district is gonna take on Wyoming Area? When, and why are we opening ourselves up to all of this other? There's so many other things that we can be doing. And I think we need to look at other things first of, one, why are we losing students? Because I can tell you, I've spoken to a lot of the families who have gone to cyber. One is administration, two is bullying, and three are course offerings. Currently, right now, Wyoming Area does not offer the course offerings cyber schools do. Right now, only seniors can take half the courses that tenth through twelfth grade can take in cyber. Psychology, sociology, American government. These are all offered to tenth through twelfth grade. Wyoming Area does not allow it. We need to open, if we want these students to come back, why aren't we going out and talking to these families? Why aren't we asking them why they won't come back?
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carrie Darby. I am, um, a resident of Exeter Township, Wyoming County. Um, this is probably my bad for not knowing this, but is there anybody on the board that actually resides in Wyoming County? No, okay, so. My, um, my question is, and first of all, I applaud the idea of look, of putting a, a committee together to look into this. My concern about the committee is that there's not a single board member here that represents the, the taxpayers from my community that also pay the taxes for Wyoming Area. I would like to, um, I know you mentioned that it's a possibility of having the public available. I think it's really important to have somebody from Wyoming County, um, Exeter Township on that committee. Reason being, several years ago, I think it was more than ten, but the. Reason being, several years ago, I think it was more than ten, but the, um, Exeter Township, Wyoming County petitioned the state education board to ask if Exeter Township, Wyoming County could be removed from the Wyoming area. If you ever looked at the school district map, there's like this goofy little corner that we're stuck in, and they asked to be joined with Toncanic. Um, every single morning, the Toncanic area school buses drive past my house. That is very frustrating because that school district is much closer to my house for my children to attend than Wyoming area. So I just asked that when a committee is formed, that somebody be a representative of the taxpayers of Exeter Township, Wyoming County. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Are there any other questions from the audience on the motion to amend? Uh, Mr. Alberi, if I have a roll call on the motion to amend? Cashmarsky?
No, but I am interested in hearing more, I'm just not comfortable making a motion to amend with me when I still have, you know. I, I'd still like to see more information on how, such as I considered exactly what.
Supi?
Since I've answered probably eight hundred questions on this topic since last Tuesday, I'm a yes on it, I guess.
Belenti?
No.
Kumpel?
No.
Gazza?
No.
Kotko?
Yes.
Bittera?
Yes.
Can Penny?
Yes.
Alberi, no. Uh, motion to amend fails. Okay, uh, I'll open, uh, for questions from the board on the rest of the finance report. I'll just say I kind of expected it to fail, it's kind of funny because we don't have a majority for it to pass, but we have four people that could've been on the committee. Um, but yeah, I guess I'll just look into it myself. I, I, my, I, like I said, my whole issue is I just don't see what the plan is going forward. I just don't see it.
I have a question.
We're, we're, uh, gonna take questions from the board first regarding the finance report and then we'll open to the audience, sorry about that.
Peter, it's not, it's not a bad idea.
Yeah.
And I, we've spoken and I like the idea.
Right.
I think it's a good one, especially for the future, but just right now, the motion right now is not something that I'm agreeing with, but a committee and like doing the research and finding things out, I, I am on board with. But at this point, like this second, I just said no because, you know, I think we have bigger fish to fry at the moment, but I, I, I don't think it's terrible.
Okay.
Uh, I, I commend Mr. Bitter from thinking outside the box, and like I said, I'm not opposed to it down the road.
Okay, yeah, and the reason I made that this meeting is because we're doing the budget, and that's kind of why I'm making the motion. But I'll open a support for any other questions on the finance report. Are there any questions from the audience on the finance?
I don't have any, I'm just, I'm just, two, two things, I want, is that okay? Okay, uh, just on item eleven, you know, what we're talking and discussing with the tax administration. I, uh, typically make this decision yearly based on three criteria. First would be the charter cyber costs, which we discussed that, right? Second would be our end-of-fund balance, that assume, uh, assume that a safe increase in state money, we don't know what we're gonna get. The irony never changes that we have to pass a budget before the state of Pennsylvania does. It puts us at a total disadvantage every single year, so all we're doing is shooting in the dark, we don't know what we're gonna get, it's usually not what we're looking for, even if it is what we're looking for, it's not a lot. State funding, state formula, none of that's gonna change with the nine of us. Third criteria is our borrowing power. Mr. Malone, as mentioned for the last several years, at least as long as I'm on the board, you know, we've used ESSER money, which is, we're federal grants during COVID times to do large capital improvement projects with respect to, you know, uh, COVID-adjacent issues in our school district. Any of those issues without the ESSER money would have already sunk our district. We're up against every year, a chiller going down, a this breaking, a that breaking, and we don't have the money to cover it, you see our finances. So much like the rest of us, we're up against borrowing power. If I lose a water heater and a furnace, I cannot afford both in the same year, sorry to say. I'd have to go and borrow it. My borrowing power is based on what I've got in the bank and what I make every year. So once we start to whittle away at what we've got in our savings account, the next time we lose a chiller or something that we cannot afford, we go to the bank, we're gonna say, how much can we borrow? They're gonna look at our history, that is ugly of tax increases. I'll be the first to say it, this would be four years in a row for me. I didn't run the raise taxes, my own taxes, this would be four in a row. I do it every single year because I understand somewhere down the road in this building right now is a machine humming that's gonna break tomorrow, and we don't have the money to fix it. And we've got four buildings in the same exact scenario. Mr. Bitter talks about merging with another district, we have internal discussions, what would it cost to build a brand-new school for K to six? Twenty million dollars, twenty-five million dollars, who even knows what it would cost? What district is taking that on?
We'll expire.
We'll expire.
Okay, maybe we'll expire it.
Who got, who got a plan, Tom?
Yeah, okay, if we merge with another district, is that district gonna make less money in their collective bargaining agreements? Because by the way, ours is almost the lowest in the region, support staff and teachers. It's scenarios teachers aren't gonna make less money just because they're gonna absorb us. I'd be thrilled if the teachers are made more money, full disclosure, I'm married to them.
Do they pay their health insurance?
Excuse me?
Do they pay their own health insurance?
Who's that?
The teachers.
Dr. Pollard, will you speak to that, please?
They pay, there's a premium share, yes.
Just like everybody else?
Wouldn't mean just like.
Like I have to pay my own health insurance?
Yeah, ma'am, ma'am, we're not gonna do it.
Yeah, I mean, it's also not a debate.
You don't have time.
There's, there's a premium share the teachers pay.
And I promise you, I'm, I'm about to wrap it up, and if you have a question, please ask, okay? That's how I make this decision, I'm one of nine people, I'll vote in a second with everybody. I'm a no this year. Three and a half percent is not enough. And I can say that comfortably. Five and a half is what we need. Every single year, that increase, that mileage threshold is set to match inflation. When we don't reach it, the first year or the second year, we're in trouble. That's not up for debate, that's two plus two equals four, we're gonna start every year with less, whether we look at ten percent cuts or not. That's where I'm at. Not a question, just enough to say, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Supi. Any other questions from the board on the finance report? Any questions from the audience on the finance report? Please just say your name, too.
Brenda Yurcheck, Exeter.
Thank you.
Um, with the committee, I think it's a fabulous idea, um, look at warp.
We're past that, though.
Oh, we are?
That, that vote's already over, yeah.
Oh, that was my comment.
Yeah, that vote's already done.
All right, then I'll just wait until the whole end to make my comment.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Vanessa Smith, Exeter, um, for number eleven. Could you read, because they're not printed on the thing, could you read where it says the, the numbers that go in those three lines?
So I'll, I'll repeat that.
Just the first part.
It's one sentence, yeah, I'll repeat it, click number eleven.
Yeah.
Uh, the second paragraph.
Yes.
Final general fund budget provides for the expenditures of forty-seven million, eight hundred thirty-four thousand and nine dollars, and equity and revenues of a like amount reflects a tax of twenty-one point seven eight nine zero mils for the boroughs of Exeter, Exeter Township, Luzern County, West Pitts, and West Wyoming, Wyoming, per one thousand, sales valuation on real estate, and a tax of one oh eight point six nine zero mils for Exeter Township, Wyoming County.
Okay, and I also fully support your format committee.
Thanks. Any other questions from the audience on the finance report? Mr. Green?
Just, just a quick comment, um, we, we talk about the difficulty in trying to make cuts when a few months ago, when granted, it's easier to learn of tax deferment to a local person to, to build a Wawa in Exeter, nothing wrong with building a Wawa. Okay, when I, when I heard, I was at that meeting, when I heard that, I was like, oh, nice presentation, I did a nice job. I guess we have enough money that my taxes aren't gonna go up, and then two meetings later, my taxes were up six and a half percent, okay? I, logically, that makes absolutely no sense to, you're not gonna make the ten years with the tax increase to get more money on that piece of property. Okay, if I, if I wanna buy a piece of property to rent it out, do I get a warrant for ten years? Could I ask for it? If I wanna buy a rental property or something, that'd be great. Right, makes no sense, guys, okay, stop being hypocritical, stop it, just stop.
I.
Don't be hypocritical, you're gonna raise taxes, you're gonna raise taxes, it is what it is, raise them for everybody, not just the chosen few.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the audience on the finance report? Mr. Alberi, if we have a roll call on the finance report, please? Cashmarsky?
Yes.
Supi?
Uh, I'm a no on eleven, uh, I guess I'm a no.
Belenti?
Um, before I, before I give my vote, I do just briefly wanna say, I know this is very, very unpleasant for all of us, as, as it is for you. Uh, we do need to recognize what's at stake here, that this is the, the fabric that holds our community together, and we have done cuts to, to try to save off a, a tax increase. We have, uh, we've cut three classrooms, as we have mentioned. We are not replacing an administrator, we're thinking of not, uh, uh, replacing an administrator. We're taking some classrooms back from the LIU to bring back here to Wyoming area, bring some of the out-of-district placements back. Uh, but the challenge is that we face a ten and a half percent increase in healthcare, a three hundred thousand dollar over-budget for cyber charter. But the real problem, as has been mentioned, is the state funding formula. I personally have reached out to Lisa Baker, I've been in talks with her, I have talked to Representative Pugh, I talked to, uh, on a federal level, Rob Breznerhan, advocating for more funding for, for Wyoming area specifically. We are on track to receive a proposed four hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars Wyoming area from the state. Our friends across the river who are, this is no, no dig at them, but they are on track to receive one point four eight nine. That is a million dollars more than us. They have big business, they have Geisinger, they have Miracle, they have Home Depot, they blow us out of the water. And we are getting four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, they are getting a million dollars more than us. That enrages me and I hope it enrages you. Reach out to your state lawmakers, we, we need to advocate for change. It's not fair that we have to keep coming to you to make up the shortfall. This funding formula is broken and something needs to be done. I just want, one last comment is that, make no mistake, Wyoming area's future is very bright. We are facing some challenges, but we have the best administrators, the best teachers, the best support staff, and Wyoming area will continue to be the shining star that it is today. With that being said, I vote yes to all.
Kumpel?
Yes.
Gazza?
Yes.
Kotko?
Yes.
Bittera? No on eleven and thirteen, yes on the rest. Can Penny?
No on eleven and thirteen, yes on the rest.
Alberi, no on number eleven, yes to the rest. Motion passes. Uh, thank you, Mr. Alberi. Mrs. Gazza, can you please read the, any additions to the education report?
Yes, I can, yes. As per session one through eleven, number twelve, approve the appointments of the following extracurricular positions for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year. Lauren Wallow, Special Education Chairperson, Maureen Pykes, Social Studies Chairperson, Joe Pizano, Physical Education Chairperson, Robert Leminselli, Career Technology Chairperson, Lorraine Jarden, Art Chairperson, Carmen Latona, English Chairperson, Christine Merachu, World Language Chairperson, Shay Riley, Music Chairperson, Brian Butler, Guidance Chairperson, Damian Rukuski, Science Chairperson, Nicole Yankelner, Chairperson, Annette Jones, Family and Consumer Science Chairperson, Leo Lowitz, Management Chairperson. Leo Lowitz, Senior Class Co-Advisor, Paula Cecil, Senior Class Co-Advisor, Christina Anderson, Junior Class Co-Advisor, Ashley Dunn, Junior Class Co-Advisor, Maureen Pykes, Sophomore Class Advisor and Freshman Class Advisor, Leo Lowitz, Student Council Advisor, Josette Seplo, Assistant Student Council Advisor, Carmen Latona, Class Advisor, Class Day Advisor, Damian Rukuski, Key Club Advisor, Jackie Casa, FBLA Co-Advisor, Maureen Pykes, National History Day Advisor, Mike Fonte, Director of Inner Mirrors, Joe Pizano, Athletic Director, Chuck Yarmy, Drama Advisor, Kate Mangan, Assistant Drama Advisor, Andrew Buckalino, The March Band Director, and Indoor Inns Director, Dennis Handrow, Garden Club Co-Advisor, and Annette Jones, Garden Club, Club Co-Advisor. Christine Rutledge, National Honor Society Advisor, Michelle Harden, Builders Club Advisor, Kayla Slack, Yearbook Advisor, Lorraine Jarden, National Art Honor Society Co-Advisor, and Kayla Q. Ola, National Art Honor Society Co-Advisor. Number thirteen, approve the appointment of Kate Chandra as Special Education Teacher effective for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year. Number fourteen, approve the appointment of Emily Howells as Special Education Teacher effective twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year. Number fifteen, approve the appointment of Jackie Casa as Special Education Teacher effective for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty school year. Number sixteen, approve the appointment of Jeanette Palavetta as an Occupational Therapist effective twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year. Number seventeen, approve the appointment of Julia Stodmire as Speech and Language Pathologist effective for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year. Number eighteen, approve the appointments for the twenty-twenty-five Summer Camp, Julia Evans, Jennifer Buquetti, Michelle McDermott, Samantha Pizano, Sarah Connolly, Inarcus Barazza, and Molly McKenna. Number nineteen, approve class, a third-grade class for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year. Number twenty, approve Dr. John Pollard's evaluation as a rating of satisfactory, motion to move? And that concludes the education report, anything?
Thank you, Mrs. Gazza, are there any questions from the board on the education report? Are there any questions from the audience on the education report? Special?
Number eighteen. April thirtieth, you all received an email from me regarding Sarah Connolly and the way she was treating the first graders to the point where she was removed from the classroom and placed, uh, in another location. And now she's being put in the summer camp.
I don't think we're gonna discuss personnel matters in public at school.
Well, I don't want her near my child, and he's in the summer camp.
We don't wanna discuss the personnel in detail in that, in public, if you have a request, certainly make that request and we'll make the adjustment.
Thank you.
Vanessa Smith, Exeter, a question regarding number twelve for the extracurricular positions, are those positions paid, um, a stipend in addition to their teaching salary? Or are those volunteer positions?
Uh, many of them are paid stipend positions, that's, uh, part of the collective bargaining agreement. There's several on there that, uh, are compensated through comp time.
Through what?
Comp time.
Oh, comp time.
Yes.
I know it, okay.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Green?
Real quick, the special ed, um, appointments. Uh, when I was on the board, I, I believe that there was a provision in a hiring contract that they, they had to stay into the position for a certain period of time, is that still effective?
Yes, it's still part of the collective bargaining, they need to stay in a special ed position for two years.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the audience on the education report?
Uh, just to, to clarify, so all those advisor positions, Mr. Pollard, are paid one way or another?
There's compensation, yes, one way or the other.
One way or the other?
Yes.
Uh, just one quick question, there's so many, you went by it pretty quick, but what is a garden club advisor?
So, uh, Mr. Handel and Mrs., um, Jones, uh, they bring the kids in after school, they plant a garden out in one of the open spaces, and then they utilize the food to help offset.
So we're raising taxes, but we're spending money, you know, things like this.
Well, that, that stuff's donated, and I think the gardening is a very important life skill, so.
Yeah, also, to be fair, I don't think cutting the gardening club would have any impact on where we're at, by any significant impact.
No, not, not that alone.
I know, I know what you mean, yeah.
Take that and go through the whole entire budget.
I get your point.
I guarantee you there, it, it would make a difference.
Thank you, Mr. Duvall. Are there any other questions from the audience on the education report?
Did, did anybody?
Can you come sign in, please? I don't think you've signed in yet.
Did anybody ever consider an auditor? Bring it in.
We're monitored over here, thanks.
No, to see where they could cut budgets, or what could be cut.
Yeah, we need, we need your name.
Samantha Hardship.
Thank you.
I'm assuming that would cost money, too.
But we do have an audit each year from an independent.
And he tells you where you might be able to make cuts.
Well, he'll, well, he's not involved in the budgetary, but he'll certify to our financial spending, financial social. In fact, he may be presenting under a true nature.
Are there any other questions from the audience on the education report? Mr. Alberigi?
Mr. Utara, I would, I would like to make a comment. We have a policy where if you want to address the board, you come up to the podium, you sign your name, and you got three minutes to address the the board. I mean, that goes for everybody that's in the audience. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry about that. Mr. Campini, I will do my best to address the call. Um, are there any virtual questions tonight?
Yes.
Mr. Alberigi, we have a roll call on the education report.
Catch Morsky?
Yes.
Soupy?
Yes.
Valenti?
I'm abstaining on thirteen, yes to the rest.
Kunkel?
Um, yes.
Gazza?
Yes.
Capco?
Yes.
Utara?
Yes.
Campini?
Yes.
Alberigi, yes. Motion passes.
Mrs. Valenti, will you please read any additions to the activities report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice President. Number six, uh, number one through five as read at work session. Number six, approve the appointments of the following assistant coaches and volunteer coaches for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fall sports season. Cheerleading, Rosalyn Leo, Assistant Coach. Cross country, Nicholas Shandra, Junior High Coach. John Kearns, Volunteer Coach. Soccer, Allison Cluss, Junior High Coach. Elizabeth Core, Junior High Volunteer Coach. Volleyball, Lacy Gashai, Assistant Coach. Jean Marie Argenio, Volunteer Coach. Alan Hanchek, Volunteer Coach. Field hockey, Christina Grantee, Assistant Coach. Joe Bednarski, Volunteer Coach. Lexie Croslly, Volunteer Coach. Kara Rehill, JV Coach. Chris Kaminski, Assistant JV Coach. Golf, Robert Yasco, Assistant Coach. Matthew Finn, Volunteer Coach. Soccer, Boys, Brian Shandra, Assistant Coach. Soccer, Girls, Ashley Dunn, Assistant Coach. Aleah Cranston, Volunteer Coach. Eric Fairchild, Volunteer Coach. Nicholas Evans, Volunteer Coach. Football, Michael Fonti, Assistant Coach. Rich Mazinski, Assistant Coach. Ken Kapetchny, Assistant Coach. Jason Speet, Assistant Coach. Tom Loftus, Assistant Coach. Don, Don Heinmarsh, Assistant Coach. And the three following coaches will be sharing two assistant coach salaries. Corey Popovich, Assistant Coach. John Heinmarsh, Assistant Coach. Kim Pace, Volunteer Coach. Corey Murrock, Volunteer Strength Coach. Steven Sokach, Minnick Volunteer Coach. Pending clearances, Tom Campini, Volunteer Coach. Jim Pazano, Volunteer Coach. Paul Angeli, Volunteer Coach. Paul J. Angeli, Volunteer Coach. Joe Karcotsky, Volunteer Coach. Bryce Pinkel, Volunteer Coach. Rocco Pazano, Volunteer Coach. Eric Spees, Volunteer Coach. Mike Laffey, Volunteer Strength Coach. David Pakione, Volunteer Strength Coach. Charles Medico, Statistician. Number seven, approve the following revised coaches' salary. Cassidy Graham, Junior High Assistant Softball Coach, two thousand six hundred seventy-seven dollars. Dean Carey, Assistant Varsity Softball Coach, five thousand five hundred and twenty dollars. Kayla Today, Junior High Softball Coach, three thousand eleven dollars. Number eight, approve the twenty twenty-five Summer Recreation Program appointments. This program is funded by Title IV Building Safe Communities and Stronger Connection Grant. Stadium Weight Room Supervisor, Joe Pazano. Stadium Weight Room Monitors, Faculty Staff, Mike Fonti, Ken Kapetchny, Tom Loftus, Randy Spencer, and Dennis Haydo. Stadium Weight Room Monitor Students, Adriana Fonti, Rocco Pazano, Nina Angeli, Brady Kearns. Pool Supervisor, Erin Viglione. Pool Monitors, Faculty and Staff, Matt Finn, Kayla Today. Pool Lifeguard Students, Ella Campini, Ellen Kernan, Talia Pazano, Brianna Harry, Brianna Dragua, Michael Colaruso, Jenna Ragatase, Francine Graham, and Lucia Campini. Non-Pool Monitors Students, Anthony DeLuca, Maggie Hallman, Angelina Trascatti, Erica Gilligan. Yoga Sessions, Christine Campini. Number nine, approve the request of Dr. John Pollard, Superintendent, on behalf of the Wyoming Area Foundation to hold movie days on Thursday, July seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, and Thursday, July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five in the left alcove of the secondary auditorium, two forty-five PM to six forty-five PM. And that completes the activities report. Motion to adopt.
Second. Thank you, Mrs. Valenti. Are there any questions from the board on the activities report? Are there any questions from the audience on the activities report?
Some questions, please. Todd Bonding from Harding, and, um, Volunteer Coach for our wrestling program. Hi, everybody. So I, we usually come in and we talk about fair and equal distribution of the PIA double A points, and we're gonna keep repeating this. Um, so when we talk about equal or fair distribution of PIA double A points, um, when it comes to girls wrestling, these points don't have to be cut down the middle and even for everybody. We know that ninety percent of the team are boys, uh, but our girls cannot go a whole season without competing in live matches. Um, then we go ahead and throw them in a state tournament and wish them good luck. Um, which is not fair, right? Uh, we must allow and find them opportunities to compete throughout the 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 next school year. Um, two to three PA tournaments next season might be a great starting point. Um, so my only question tonight, and since we last spoke about this, has the athletic department developed their plan to equally and fairly distribute competition points next season if no girls team is sponsored? And a reminder that we do have a fully committed wrestling booster club that is ready and willing to help offset added costs when we do have our wrestling, or our girls wrestling team. Um, our wrestling club leaders are an amazing group of parents and primary supporters of our entire, entire wrestling program. Um, they are killing it, guys. They are one of the best booster programs in the school, and I just want you guys to know that they have our full support. Um, thank you, thank you for all your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Valenti. Are there any other questions from the audience on the activities report? Are there any virtual questions on the activities?
Um, I have one regarding, uh, what is the status of the girls wrestling team?
We're still reviewing our options, any information?
Yeah, I mean, I'd hope we can make a decision as soon as possible, considering we've gone through the budget now at this point. Any other virtual questions, please?
No, that's.
Mr. Alberigi, we have a roll call on the activities report, please.
Catch Morsky?
Yes.
Soupy?
Yes.
Valenti?
Yes.
Kunkel?
Hi, I'm Epstein from the Volunteer Club Hall Coach, and yes to the rest.
Gazza?
Yes.
Capco?
Yes.
Utara?
Yes.
Campini?
Yes.
Alberigi, yes. Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Alberigi. Mrs. Kunkel, can you read any additions to the building report, please?
Yes, uh, number one, approve the appointment of Nicole Gridlock as a paraprofessional for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Number two, approve the appointment of Amy Callahan as a paracare aide for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Number three, approve the appointment of Christina Miscavige as a personal care aide for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Number four, approve the appointment of Melinda Gillo as a personal care aide for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And number five, approve the appointment of Jennifer Coyne as a personal care aide for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And that concludes the building report. Motion to accept.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Kunkel. Are there any questions from the board on the building report? Are there any questions from the audience on the building report? Are there any virtual questions tonight?
No.
Mr. Alberigi, we have a roll call on the building report, please.
Catch Morsky?
Yes.
Soupy?
Yes.
Valenti?
Yes.
Kunkel?
Yes.
Gazza?
Yes.
Capco?
Yes.
Utara?
Yes.
Campini?
Yes.
Alberigi, yes. Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Alberigi. Can you please read any additions to the bids report?
Uh, no additions at this time. That concludes the bids report. Make a motion to accept.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Alberigi, can you please, are there any questions from the board on the bids report? Any questions from the audience on the bids report? Are there any virtual questions, please? Mr. Alberigi, can you please take roll call on the bids report?
Catch Morsky?
Yes.
Soupy?
Yes.
Valenti?
Yes.
Kunkel?
Yes.
Gazza?
Yes.
Capco?
Yes.
Utara?
Yes.
Campini?
Yes.
Alberigi, yes. Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Alberigi. Mr. Capco, can you please read the police report?
Sir, I need you, Mr. President. Uh, monthly report for May and June of twenty twenty-five, there was a total number of thirty-three total calls for service. Thank you for the wonderful.
Thank you, Mr. Capco. At this time, I'll open it to open discussion from the board. The board have anything for open discussion? I'll now open it to the audience for open discussion. As a reminder, please come, sign in, and you have your ask.
Uh, friend of yours, Jack Exeter, um, Dr. Pollard, on your superintendent's report, um, question. Mrs. O'Malley, who's retiring, do we have, um, a department, like chair, like, are we gonna?
Uh, so we had done an RFP for a food service management company, all right? And that RFP closed, we went through the evaluation piece, and then the committee from the board having a negotiation meeting with, um, with people on Monday.
Okay, I just, you know, everybody.
No, I get it, yeah.
We don't have.
Just for your, and I'm sure you're aware, we had discussed how we were gonna move that, through that process with your union leadership, and part of the RFP was that they needed to maintain, you know, district employees and that kind of thing.
Yes.
You know, there, there's no.
We just wanted, or I did, I wanted to make sure everything was gonna go smoothly for the beginning of the school year.
We were gonna go smooth and be.
I'm hoping.
Right as rain in July.
I'm actually ready to go back to, back to work. I'm like bored. I've been cleaning my house, like scrubbing walls and all that, so I'm ready to.
Stop over.
Um, second, uh, we were talking about the, um, making the merge happen or something around a committee. I think that's a fabulous idea. Um, if you noticed, you know, our police, local police department, they merged into warp. Um, Wilkes-Barre, they merged Coughlin, GR, and Myers all together. And I believe I just heard on the news last week, maybe the week before, um, about, like, I think Edwardsville and Plymouth Police Departments are looking into merging. Um, so it's not only that we're looking into it, I think is, you're gonna see that happen more and more. So if you had any questions, I'd probably reach out to Wilkes-Barre area to see what they did, to see how they did it to merge all those.
They didn't merge a district, they merged their.
Theirs, the facilities.
Yeah, that's different than than a district. So I, I mean, certainly we could touch base.
I mean, and and I don't know if you guys have been into that high school, but I have, and it's gorgeous inside, like.
But, but, and I, I'm sure, Jack, just, so you know, those were all under the school, they were all under Wy, Wilkes-Barre area school district. All those schools that you listed that were joined at one facility were all in their district.
Cause I know that there was, um, there was people saying, oh, the rivalry, Wyoming area don't, doesn't like Piston, Piston area don't like Wyoming area. But I'm sure they have rivalries, so.
They did, but like I said, they were all in the same district.
So, I mean, at this point, I think as more and more students are choosing to go to cyber and not enough kids, I mean, we're collapsing, you know, a third grade class, first grade class, a kindergarten class. I think you're gonna see that more and more. Um, but that's just my, my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the audience?
Vanessa Smith, Exeter, um, so they've already been done, the kindergarten collapsing, and the first grade class collapsing, and the third grade class collapsing. Is the enrollment dropping that we're collapsing these classrooms? Are we collapsing them because the teachers are retiring and we're just moving our staff?
It's a little bit of a combination of both. So we have some positions that would become open, and we would have to backfill.
Oh, no.
And when we look at first and second grade, or I'm sorry, kindergarten and first grade, our numbers were a little bit lower, so we opted to take the opportunity to collapse them through attrition versus, um, having to, you know, jettison someone and find another spot for them. Cause I, and I know someone spoke about furloughs, there's a very distinct and and statutory driven way to go about furloughs.
What's the total number of students in the district that are in, that come into the building, like?
In this building, there's about.
In the, in the whole district?
Uh, I would say it's just shy of two thousand, so about nineteen fifty-seven, something like that.
And how many students does Wyoming area pay to cyber school, to cyber educate?
About a hundred and thirty-five.
For two point seven million dollars?
Yes, eighteen million.
I'll pick your jaw up later. Yes, yes. Cause I can, and again, just for comparison sake, I can run the entire kindergarten center and max it out at twenty-seven kids per class, I'm sorry, twenty-eight, and get almost two hundred kids over there, and I can earn up to one point two million dollars.
Oh, my goodness.
That salary benefits, you know, operational stuff, that, those kind of things.
Okay, and then this is the very last thing. If there is a merger committee formed, would it be open to the public to have a public on it as well? Like, energy, cause I know you said there's room for four board members.
I think that would be up to the committee, but.
That would be up to the committee, like.
It didn't get voted on to pass it, so I don't think I.
Are you gonna bring it up another time?
I don't know, maybe.
Should the, should the public?
Not anytime soon. I think it would be redundant to do it next month or the following month, but maybe eventually, I don't know.
Can't imagine something like that wouldn't have some publicity.
Yeah, yeah.
We're all gonna tell you what you want.
Hello, good evening. My name is Adrian Ponoski, uh, I live in, uh, West Pittston. And, uh, obviously, there was a lot of, of topics tonight on, on, all, all different things. And so I just had a couple different things to, um, just kind of ask about. Um, I noticed in the, uh, in the agenda for today, I was talking about the different, say, uh, coaches and their, their salaries that they get. So how is that determined exactly? Like.
So that salary has been determined in our collective bargaining agreement. They're set based on the amount of time. So if you're looking at maybe one, a head coach of one sport is different than a head coach of another.
Okay.
It's about the novelty of the position, the time.
Got it.
Uh, the size, the size of the teams, et cetera.
Okay.
So that's how it's set.
Cause I was just thinking, I'm like, oh, there's a lot of names on here, and we're only seeing the prices of, say, three of them. So I was just curious, like, what's the going rate of all, you know, the other coaching positions? Cause I'm just thinking, like, bigger picture, sometimes, yes, it could be those smaller things that can maybe be cut, or, you know, reduced or whatever, that could then lead to, say, greater savings, given, you know, the state of, of the district and everything. And and two, the whole merger aspect, too. I mean, I do like the idea of the, thinking of outside of, of the box, absolutely. I do like, uh, like the idea of having to, say, do a merger with that. Um, I would like to see a lot of transparency, though, if that were to, say, happen, meaning like regular meetings, how this would be, uh, participation from, say, the community and everything. And also, I think what would be really cool, just as a suggestion here, is for things, um, cause I know, um, Mrs. Valenti uh, mentioned it about the different things that have been, say, cut, that you guys have looked at. That was kind of nice to hear, because we weren't initially hearing that tonight. So it was like, is that happening, is it not? But I think what would help a little bit more even with that is maybe if we could see the dollar amounts then of like, okay, you're saying this classroom's being collapsed, well, how much savings are we, say, actually getting from that? You know, where this is, is being cut back, what are the savings there? So just so, I think the public could have more of a general idea then of like, exactly the exact figures that we're, you know, say, kind of talking here and everything. Um, and in regards, last thing, too, to the cyber school aspect, um, I know someone mentioned about talking to those kids to kind of see, why are you going to cyber? I like that idea, too, kind of figure out what is, what is the issue, say, at, at the core of this and everything. And then also the mention tonight about, um, our state legislatures. And I was thinking about that, and that might be kind of nice, too, if there's any way, and I don't know if you guys are allowed to do this or not, I'm not sure how that would work. But could there be almost a presentation to the public to inform them more than of how and what is going on in Harrisburg with how things are being, say, budgeted and and allocated for everything? Because I'm going to be honest, that was a bit eye-opening for me to hear tonight. I didn't realize that across the river, they're getting more, you know, money than we are here. When you would think truthfully, it should be the opposite, if you're having all of that, uh, infrastructure and and buildings, and then you don't overhear. So, um, I'm definitely curious about that, and would like to, say, look into that more. But again, not sure if that's something that could be presented as a whole, you know, to. But again, not sure if that's something that could be presented as a whole, you know, to, to the community, to just make them more aware of it, so. But that, that was it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments from the audience? Denise, any virtual questions? Motion to adjourn?
That's it.